Okay, this meeting has been voted in all the normal voting places. I make a motion to approve the agenda. We have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor of that say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion's carried. Okay, with the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of Monday, May the 22nd, 2017, 6:00 PM. Close session. Monday, May 22nd, 2017, 7:00 PM. Open session. Tuesday, June 6th, 2017, 11:00 AM. Closed session.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Uh, one correction, Stephanie. Um, the roll call vote on the Monday, May 22nd meeting should be below the motion, not above the motion.
Got it.
The motion to approve. Okay, with that correction. All in favor of that say aye.
Aye.
Same side. Polls? Motion's carried. And national report will be listed.
The voter listing for May 22nd, 2017 through June 21st, 2017. Term funds payable direct deposits numbers 900044158 through 900044264 for $133,196.27. Next is direct deposit numbers 900044265 through 900044372 for $139,177.47. Next is the wire transfers to pay liabilities. Wires numbers 201600603 through 201600662 for $205,106.52 for a total payroll of $477,480.26. Next is accounts payable. We have checks number 52254 through 52304 for $103,922.26. Next is AP wire transfers 201600636 through 201600639 for $8,786.76. Next credit card transactions 0606 through 0606 for $26,800.78. Next is transactions AG0523 through AG0613 for $14,399.35. Next ACH direct deposits number 161700127 through 161700146 for $2,747.24. Total accounts payable of $656,399.39. Total disbursements of $634,136.65.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Questions?
What's our rebate change with Angelex?
Um, with Angelex, it's higher than JQ, Morgan Chase. Um, I'd have to look at the exact numbers. I don't know off the top of my head. But, uh, the reason we're looking at going with them is because a lot of people are dropping out of the consortium with JQ, Morgan Chase, and now continually lower the rebate that they're offering. So, we've been trying to bring Angelex on more and more, and, um, move forward to using them through our processes. But I can get back to you on the exact rebate number.
It truly is a financial thing to get a higher rebate. So, you can find out those exact.
Yep.
Okay, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion's carried. No delegations to be heard. Then we're on to administrators' report.
Sure.
Donation.
Donations would like to present a $310.34 donation from the PTO. A teacher grant purchase an outdoor bulletin board, uh, for, uh, our primary school playground. Again, that would be operated by our school guidance counselor, Mr. Jackie Corners. So, just looking for a motion to approve the donations as presented.
Motion to approve the donation for $310.34.
I'll second.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of that say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion's carried. Personnel actions. Do we have a resignation?
Sure, we have a resignation from Katie Moore, who, uh, we just approved her contract. We'd like to be released from that. So, you have her letter of resignation and, uh, request for release. So, just looking for a motion to approve the resignation of Katie Moore as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Katie Moore as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second during discussion. This is purely personal?
Uh, personal based on a financial situation.
Correct.
Yep.
Any other questions?
We did tell her that, uh, right after this, we do have a, uh, presentation and a recommendation that they had a person to replace her too as well. Yep.
Okay, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion's carried.
And to replace, uh, Katie Moore, we are very excited, and I say we, we have over 100 applicants to, for that 5K position. Uh, myself, Mr. Budish, and Ms. Crozier interviewed over 20 of them. And, uh, we had two top, top finalists brought forward to our entire 5K team. So, uh, the 5K team unanimously has, uh, brought forward, and we have an agreed upon contract with Alyssa Mayer to replace Katie Moore. Alyssa comes to us via Lake Country School District where she taught 5K last year. So, um, she was a, uh, reduced for reduction in force reason from full time and part time. So, um, she fell in our lap. So, we're very excited to welcome Alyssa Mayer. So, just looking for the board to approve the individual teacher contract for Alyssa Mayer as presented.
I make a motion to recommend the approval of Alyssa Meyer's teaching, individual teaching contract as presented.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor of that say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion's carried. We're on to information.
Sure, um, all sorts of things going on. And, uh, Mr. Natchine was going to give us a little update, but, uh, he had a family, uh, member of his family being ill this morning. So, let him, we put that at home tonight. Um, lots of things going on. Uh, thanks to the gracious approval from the school board. And I know, thank you all for taking some time this past week to walk through our buildings and see all the construction that's been going on. Uh, we've got our ceiling project happening. We've got, uh, some carpeting that's already been taking place. We've got, um, in our 75 section we're in, we have a lighting replacement happening. Uh, we've obviously got some new LEDs along the sides. Um, in the back, there is the new fixtures, uh, that are going to be going in. And it blew my mind where there is no bulbs. So, we are in a day and age now where they just have light strips, I guess. So, um, in my house, we still have light bulbs. So, maybe gotta get with the times. But what John's team has been doing is, is in working with Ron Reinowski, who is Heiny Letric, who's our village president, uh, going through and making recommendations for de-lamping. So, uh, a typical classroom in the past may, might have had 12, uh, fixtures in it. We have been bringing that down to nine. So, uh, with the new LEDs, uh, we've been, you know, de-lamping, taking them out. But in our other sections where we've been doing the ceiling project, where we have to remove, uh, some more fixtures too, de-lamping there. But then ultimately to taking, putting LED bulbs from those fluorescents. But then also going from three fluorescents down to two LEDs. So, um, lots of energy-saving projects. We are working closely with focus on energy as well as we get rebates for every bulb we take out, for every LED we install, and for every ballast we remove, uh, from that standpoint too. So, uh, the intermediate school tuck pointing has been done. So, a lot of that work has been going on. We've had some major massive roof removals and replacements happening as well. So, uh, the next phases, we have to have our, all of our asphalt, our hardscapes are being re-sealed next week, actually for the week of the fourth. So, uh, when we come back after the Fourth of July week, we will have a new striping. Uh, it'll all be sealed. It'll look brand new. Uh, also in conjunction with PTO, our Gaga ball pits have been installed. And, uh, those have been, uh, the wood for that and the construction materials have been ordered. So, we'll be putting those up too a little later in the month of July. So, uh, everything is on track. Uh, we've got everything moving. Uh, we also have our primary school renovation for the library occurring. Uh, we created a new space, but then ultimately we are going to begin that project. And we are finalizing that with the PTO, uh, picking up colors, finalizing furniture, et cetera, et cetera. So, everything is moving forward and on time, which is what we like to see. So, um, furniture update too. Uh, last month, you guys authorized us to, uh, purchase $35,000 of the furniture. Thank you. Um, that has all been ordered and placed, and, uh, we anticipate that being here middle of August. So, um, we worked with our staff and we were able to, through negotiations, some, some also bidding, uh, get everything we wanted, uh, just under $35,000. So, thank you very, very much for that. So, um, lots more coming and, uh, you know, look forward to, uh, taking you guys around a little later in July and seeing the progress.
Okay, so we're on to committee reports. We've got the finance committee.
Sure. Uh, thanks to Chris and Randy. Uh, we did interview, uh, food service vendors. Uh, we, we brought it down to, uh, out of the four that submitted RFPs, we did bring in the top two. And you'll see it as part of the board packet, you'll find the rating sheet that the, uh, the administration went through, uh, and the process in which we selected. Uh, the, one afternoon, we, uh, brought in Chartwells as well as Aramart. And, uh, um, through the process and through conversation and through process of elimination as it relates to, um, the, the, the approved RFP, uh, rating sheet, it is our finance recommendation to, uh, make a motion to approve Chartwells as our food service provider. Um, as we know, a few months ago, uh, the board, uh, both boards from Hartland Lakeside and Merton agreed to join ventures and share a food service director. And I'm pleased to say that Hartland Lakeside has also approved, uh, last Monday, actually, um, as Chartwells as their food service provider for next year too as well. So, um, we've got Logan here. Logan is, uh, the recommended food service director, uh, that, uh, Chartwells is bringing over to us. And also has helped us through this process as well as we were teaming up with Hartland Lakeside. So, um, we're very, very excited to recommend, uh, Chartwells, but we'll be doing that a little later in the meeting, so.
And Logan's with, uh, Hartland Lakeside, please. How many years has he lived with them?
Uh, this will be my second full year coming up. So, this is a year and a half. Logan.
So, we're very excited to have Logan join our team here.
Okay. Okay, then we're on to student achievement committee.
Okay. Um, student achievement committee met early in June. Seems like forever ago. And, uh, we finalized and, and just reviewed the social studies curriculum, which we'll be looking for a final approval later in the meeting. But, uh, the student achievement committee is recommending to approve that curriculum as presented. The other piece that was presented that we had a longer conversation around was the, uh, the state's requirement of academic and career planning curriculum, which basically is first aid guidelines, PI 26. Each school is required to create the academic and career planning curriculum to engage students in exploring careers in grades six through 12. So, we don't need to worry about ninth through 12, but we do need to engage our kids in the career planning as it relates to sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. Um, what you will see is the draft that was created and brought forward by, uh, both myself and Jackie Corners. And we worked, uh, hand in hand for about an hour on it with, uh, Phil and Katie. And what you have attached and what you see presented is our recommendation at this time to be presented for the board, uh, as a first draft. Um, Jackie has worked very, very closely with Arrowhead all year. The Arrowhead counselors and the Arrowhead feeder schools have been working with South Campus, which is the freshman and sophomore guidance counselors to really, what does Arrowhead want? What do they do? And basically, we use a program called Career Cruising. But also ultimately, um, the recommendation from the student achievement committee, uh, from the board members was is continue to engage in, uh, job-specific job interviews. And we've talked a lot about kind of that oral, uh, presentation as part of the, the listening and speaking aspects of our curriculum. So, you will see that embedded with a basically, almost like a career day, on-the-job interviews where kids will create resumes and then ultimately run mock interviews with other community members and with, with other school districts, uh, so, school district employees. I know myself and Phil and Katie did that this year too as well, uh, with our fifth graders. And it was an awful lot of fun. And, uh, we thought, well, we can do that, roll that up into our, into our, uh, our language arts curriculum, have them create, do some writing around, career planning. Uh, Jackie will need all this, but then ultimately, uh, coming up with an interview day where they have to work on some skills about presenting themselves and earning that job. So, 'cause we know that your resume will only take you so far. Really is that face-to-face interaction with people. So, just our first draft, so we would welcome any feedback, uh, focused around that. But this is a state requirement that we have to have this in place prior to September 1st, starting there. But we're very excited about the presentation, uh, that is presented here today.
So. If it weren't for the state mandate, would we be doing this?
Um, we, we have talked about careers, yes, we have. Jackie is part of our guidance curriculum, has done this. It, it was not as formal as what it was, but we've always had career cruising and we've always done this through our guidance department. So, um, this kind of solidifies some things. Without this mandate, would I, would I say that we'd be interviewing and having these mock intern skills? Probably not. Nope. But it probably would have rolled up because fifth grade was so, I mean, I looked at it, I said, we gotta be doing this every year just to get the kids ready for the world of work. Because it's really important to have those, that, those people skills, that's for sure. Um, and as a side note on a student achievement committee, uh, Pete, you and I were talking about this this morning. Um, there seems to be, uh, a push in the state budget bill to require six through 12 financial literacy programs. So, um, that would probably be something that we will be looking at as creating a formal financial literacy. Uh, we have BizTown, that runs a lot of it from a K6 standpoint. The seventh and eighth grade, we don't really have a firm financial literacy component. So, just a little FYI to the school board that, uh, student achievement, we may be working on that per a state mandate as well. So, uh, and then there's a, you know, we'll be previewing this as a first draft in new business as well.
I think there's real value, especially after meeting with Jackie, in, um, yes, the state is mandating this. But she was already doing a lot of this with seven and eight. So, the mandates.
Well, and there were other, like, STEM-specific career fairs, you know, going over to WCC and then those types of things that, you know, we were, with this program, you know, just because we have to, have to do it per the state, that, you know, we're going to look to make that a little more generic, you know, instead of just STEM careers, you know, have a more generic career day, a career day. Um, 'cause most people don't have jobs in STEM, and that's okay.
We'll be funding those people.
Well, uh, you know, I just, I just heard the headline of the, the state mandate for the, uh, financial, uh, curriculum. What, did you hear this timing? I didn't really catch the timing or what, what are they talking about?
Well, it's in the bill.
That's this budget bill? Okay.
In there. I, I'm really suspect that there's going to be a lot of changes because, uh, Governor Mark doesn't have a lot of support with his, uh, with his. So, it'll be interesting to see what happens. Shake some.
Chris, to kind of answer your question, since we are so late, we actually just came out that they're going to miss their July 1st deadline.
Right.
You know, no surprise there. Um, we're probably looking at an 18, 19 mandate, Chris. So, no giving the timing of it. They're not going to drop this on September 1st. So, uh, we'll have some time to, to recreate it. But they did say that there are already some, you know, state-created or curriculums out there that would be presented by the DPI because they don't want this to be a financial burden on, no unintended financial burden on school districts to have to go out and recreate and spend a lot of money on, um, you know, programs like BizTown. And BizTown, junior achievement, I should call it, uh, is, you know, that's been around for an awful long time. And they've got programs all the way through high school. That's something we wanted to expand that too. So, uh, and we do start that from kindergarten through sixth grade. So, um, we could just expand that up. But more to come on that too as well. But it's a good question. We're not quite sure what the, the whole state budget is going to, because Merton has, there, there's a lot at stake for Merton, uh, here, whether it's the per pupil increase of 20204, or you hear about the low, uh, the low revenue limit in school districts, which we are one of, uh, about 150 that fall below, or that are below the, the state average of right around the 9,800. So, more to come on that, but it's still fuzzy about what's going to happen. We saw some new guidance today about a proposal. Again, what you read in the newspapers, the same thing I get to, pretty much. So, not much.
There's been a lot of negotiations going on because, uh, the Republicans aren't together on this.
We're just, we've got, we're, we're ready for whatever they give us. We've got a lot of worst-case scenarios that we're ready to go with.
So, we're on to policy committee?
Sure. Uh, we met last week, actually, and, uh, per the board's direction, to take a look at the superintendent evaluation or district administrator evaluation. Uh, we did collect a, a few other school districts, uh, superintendent evaluations. And obviously, in your board package, you'll find ours along with some of the other individual school districts that you see there. Um, a, a lot of heavy lifting by Phil, so thank you. Um, did, did some backdrop work, uh, prior to our meeting. And what you have attached there is basically a, a kind of a synopsis about when you take a look at a lot of the things that, you know, that are in kind of like my job description as well as a lot of the other evaluations kind of pulled together. What were the common themes? So, um, these were what, uh, the policy committee is bringing forward as some possible, as the possible first draft of the policy change to number 2005, or 2005, to, uh, create a new superintendent evaluation. So, you will find this, you'll see later in the meeting. Uh, I did recreate the current board policies around the superintendent evaluation. I crossed out what was the current language and added what the recommendation of the policy committee was. Um, we did talk about keeping the same format. It was, it was pretty straightforward and simplistic and seemed to work well. Uh, and we just changed the language around to kind of represent a little bit more of the, uh, the, the more up-to-date things that are underneath my, or the superintendent's umbrella as we take a look at job duties. So, um, so that's what we talked about. So, later in the meeting, we'll, we'll talk a little bit more formally if the board has any questions about, uh, what that might look like moving forward.
Okay, so we're on to old business, the final review of food and first rate. Great social studies curriculum?
Sure. Just, uh, this is the final review. Last month was the first. So, the administration is recommending the board approve the essential outcomes and questions, and essential questions at the district's social studies standards.
I'll make a motion to approve the essential outcomes and questions at the district's social studies standards.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. In, during the discussion. All in favor of that say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion's carried. Okay, then we've got the approval of the 1718 employee handbook. Changes there?
Again, second reading. You've seen this. We did add, if you take a look at bullet point number five, uh, we did remove any OPEP, which is the retirement language. Since this year, we didn't bring that to you guys last year. It was part of our cleanup process. We just wanted to formally acknowledge that there is no more post-retirement benefits being offered, um, per the employee handbook. So, uh, that would be the only change to this document from what we saw last time. So, uh, so the administration is recommending the board make a motion to approve the 2017-18 employee handbook as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2017-2018 employee handbook as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second during discussion. Questions? All in favor of that say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion's carried. Okay, we're on to new business. We've got some facility projects for the 1718.
Yep. So, um, as part of our, uh, facility plan, uh, this past year, we did the intermediate school sound system and clock system. Uh, the, the system next door, this one was our top priority. And this one is, is just, is due to replacement. It's, it is original equipment since 1996. And, uh, we've gone through the, the bid process, uh, created an RFP. And we would like to recommend Select Sound be the, uh, be the contractor to replace our primary school, um, clock and PA system. It is a complete replacement. So, it is taking it out and putting a brand-new one in. Uh, one of the other contractors decided just to kind of piecemeal it back together, which was still more expensive, which was an interesting proposal. But, uh, you will find that the, the Select Sound has recommended the price be $16,055.99. Uh, that does not include any hiccups they might come through as they go through. For instance, if a speaker needs to be replaced, um, if there's a, uh, you know, some labor to find why that speaker is, because you just can't replace the speaker, there could be a cut in the wire, or there could be an issue there. So, uh, in working with our contractor, uh, Jim and John as well, uh, they're recommending a not-to-exceed of $18,000. $18,000 is the amount that we have slotted in our budget for this project. So, just looking for the board to approve Select Sound as the contractor to replace the primary school's clock and PA system, not to exceed $18,000. If you just a little bit of room, uh, just in case something comes up.
Make a motion to approve Select Sound as the contractor to replace the primary school clock and PA system at an amount not to exceed $18,000.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Questions? Then, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion's carried. Is that, we've got, uh, you want to do the bid for?
Yes, please. If we could do the fence project. Um, with the replacement of our DX unit right over here, we have, uh, some fencing that has been falling over. We have it hanging up by wire. And, uh, to Katie's point, the, the barbed wire look is kind of out of style these days. So, we are recommending to replace that fence. We need to. Um, we're going to change the, the entrance to it to be on the side, so it's not facing it. So, it's a little bit easier and not as, not as visible from that standpoint too as well. We do have three bids coming. Uh, we have two bids already submitted. And that's why the administration is recommending a not-to-exceed $2,178, which is, uh, basically the low bid of the two bids we have so far. We are waiting for that third to make sure that the district hits the best value, making sure that there isn't a better value out there. Um, all three of the companies who we solicited have come, recommended, and we've used them before as well. So, just looking for the board to approve a not-to-exceed $2,178 for an intermediate school fencing project.
Motion for, um, intermediate school fencing project not to exceed $2,178.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion's carried. Okay, we are on to approval of the 2017-18 teacher contracts.
Yep. Uh, what we have presented here is, uh, and Stephanie has all of the signed contracts. So, we'll need to get our, our pens handy at the end of the, the evening. Um, the full-time contracts that we're presenting to you are ones that were not, non-renewed. So, it's, it's logistic at this time for 1.0. We have to. We have a state obligation and a statutory, this kind of obligation to fulfill that. But what you have in front of you is all of our returned teacher contracts. Um, and in the spreadsheet and in the, in the, uh, the board document, you will find the FTE and their salary amounts. So, um, as you know, the district has already agreed to a CBA with the teachers' union. So, these contracts are reflective of that increase that was allowed based on, uh, the teacher negotiations. So, um, I'm very happy to say every, while, all of our staff who was offered a contract has returned. So, we've got a retention rate of 100% currently now, which we're very excited about. So, um, so just looking for a, uh, a, a motion to approve the 2017-18 teacher contracts as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2017, 2017, 2018 teacher contracts as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Questions? All in favor of that say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion's carried. Food service contract.
Sure. Just, uh, per our process, um, the finance committee and the administration are recommending the board approve, or the board enter into an agreement with Chartwells as a new food service management company for the district. The next steps, uh, if, the next steps what's occurring right now is we don't have a contract to sign yet. Uh, the way it works, Cheryl, you want to talk a little about that process?
Um, DPI, they request some paperwork regarding our entire process. So, they want to see the newspaper announcement, um, who came to the meeting, onsite meetings of the vendors. And, uh, I have to send them our scoring grid after we receive what it is. And, uh, they also are taking a final look at any amendments to the RFP. And they also are taking a final look at any amendments to the RFP that was submitted by Chartwell's or any other company. I guess, but I submitted Chartwell's information to them. So right now, we're just waiting for the final approval from D P I after they review all those documents. And then we are set to sign the RFP with the amendment.
So that's why we don't have something in front of you to, the contract to sign. But, so the, the first step, I guess, the, the next step, not the first, because there's been many, would be for the Board to approve Chartwell's as our new food service management company for the district. The reason for D P I's involvement, if you recall, we are entering into the National School Lunch Program, so things now become very regimented and D P I has processes to want to make sure that we follow those per their guidelines.
Did the procurement process, basically?
What was the amendment to the RFP?
Um, you know, it's a lot of just one-word changes as far as through a strike, you know, all-inclusive and put, you know, partial-inclusive or just one-word changes kind of like that. So I know D P I has seen these types of things in the past. There's a little bit of language in there with the guarantee, what our guarantee is up to and then some of the conditions in order to meet that guarantee. Just saying that the numbers we provided in the RFP is what they'll be seeing when they arrive here and then they'll make sure to pay us the guarantee based on those conditions that we already set forth. So it's some pretty basic stuff like that. I feel like there's a lot of just lawyer legalese types of things.
That's where they get you at their.
But, you know, that's what D P I, they've seen this before, so that's why they like to review the amendment that comes in and make sure that it is something that's fair for everybody.
And this is their job, because they're getting, we get federal dollars, not mean we're entering into a federal program. So the states are told what to do and they've got a very large team over there, it seems like.
Yeah, it's about fifteen people at D P I taking a look at this stuff.
And Sherry and I, Sherry lasted two days, I only lasted one in the training. We did, we were official, we, we've received our training and we're ready.
Now, Harton Lake Side's participation rate wasn't as great as what ours was. Let us cheer.
Correct, that is correct. We have a greater participation rate than, than Harton Lake Side does across the district.
What if our participation rate drops off?
Sure. This is a one-year deal. Each contract is worth one year, so we are technically signing a one-year deal next year. We are required by state statute and federal guidelines to go up to RFP at a minimum of every five years. However, if we feel that the relationship and things are not going as well as we want to, we can, in, in the contract will be, hey, a, a date where we need to declare that to them. It could be ninety days, which one day have to go back. It's sixty days to declare that we are going to, going back to RFP or we are not going to be welcoming our food service management company back. So the first year, we are guaranteed to make money. And we're getting our management fee and all the fees back. That is the guarantee.
When we set up the lunch program originally back, probably close to thirty years ago. It was never supposed to be subsidized from Fontana. And we'd have to subsidize.
Last two years.
Correct, two years. And so we need to make it work, okay?
I just want to chime in about the participation rate. How it works like Harton Lake Side, since we're a federally funded program, three dollars of every a la carte sale goes towards an actual reimbursement rate. We, we never included that because it's, it's an a la carte. It's not, so we're actually right around the fifty, fifty-five percent mark. Says maybe if you include the a la carte sales, which, I mean, you can't include that on like the actual, but it comes towards reimbursement.
But Dean, what I would say is, is Harton Lake Side, every year has turned a significant profit.
Correct.
Since Logan came.
Since Logan came. Since Logan came, they have, that was one of the, a, a big selling point was, is you're right, their participation isn't as high, yet they are still putting, I think it was, what was this year, seventeen thousand?
Right around.
Right around seventeen thousand of an increase to the fund balance to Fund Fifty. So that's after all management fees. There was a seventeen thousand dollar increase to their Fund Fifty. We feel strongly that, A, the partnership, the, the reduction in the food service manager salary benefit is going to be significant as well as the reimbursable lunch program are reimbursable for not only our free reduce, but remember, every meal we sell, we get reimbursed for now. There is a, a set percentage in. I know Sherry's working with me because there's actually a couple of extra steps where you can get a few more cents per meal that we are, that we will be going after too as well. So Dean, your point of it is going to be self-sufficient, that's our goal too as well. Because we do not want to be, because next year, to be hon, like this year, we've taken it out of our budget based on the RFP. There will be no Fund Ten dollars subsidizing our school lunch program. It is a guarantee. Moving forward, we anticipate building up our Fund Fifty. We anticipate having a surplus at the end of the year, not just that guaranteed, but a surplus too as well at the end of the day. Dean, you're right with it.
Yep. I just, make it very clear.
Yep.
That we want to succeed. Okay, so we had a motion and a second. So all in favor?
No, I think we did. I'll make a motion to approve the district's entering into an agreement with Chartwell's as our new food service management company. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion's carried. Okay, we've got first draft of academic curriculum discussion?
Yeah, I guess we, is there, is there any questions from the Board regarding the proposal? Again, first draft and I know unfortunately, we don't have a long time until the, the next, the next meeting, which is July fourteenth. So if there are any questions or concerns, please let myself know and then I can run that by the Achievement Committee too as well. Just first review. Okay. We'll be going for second final in July then, so we can continue to plan.
Okay, the policy on technology use for students?
Sure. Sure. In, in talking to Katie and Phil through our student achievement side, the question came up about technology use and in particular of the use of cellphones in our schools. So, so they did request to put it on. So I guess what, what I'm here for is, is to kind of reflect a couple of things. First of all, I've talked to, we've talked to our staff about the cellphone policy. We talked to Jim, we talked to Jay and what the administration would like to see is, is to have a formal conversation surrounding our policy around, it's basically electronic, electronic communication devices is what it is. I will tell you our policy right now as it states allows us to do whatever we want. It does. We would like to go back at it though and kind of clarify some points and I think Katie said it very, very well because the use of cellphones continues to grow. First of all, it is not an acceptable use to use a cellphone for your V Y O D device. So it is, that does not fit the criteria. So for a kid to say, well, I'm using, checking Google Drive to do that, no, they have to have their own personal device or at least an own program device to be able to do that. So to kind of set the stage, we would let, the administration would love for the Policy Committee to, to reconvene and I think her, what you guys were thinking is, is bringing in Jim, Jay, Jackie and some staff to kind of talk about what the current reality is and kind of create the structures of whether it's, what do we want them to use it for, don't want them to use it for, do we want them in school at all? And then also build in, to be honest with you, what are the consequences if we say no cellphones? Where, how does that get reinforced? Because I will tell you that this is a big issue with our parents and our families about having access to our children twenty-four seven. And some of you are looking like, what? Like, yes, it is. But I say, what's your cellphone out for? My mom is texting me and whether everybody's name is Mom in their phone, I'm like, what? And I'm like, when are you coming home today? I guess it is your mom. So, but, so the administration would love for the Policy Committee to reconvene around this issue to make sure we're clarifying what those expectations are and for what the school board would really like that to be, to be looking like too.
So when we did the initiation of the fifth grade, I think they're one to one. Did we specifically specify that cellphones are not?
It, it's in our, yes, it is in all of the, the criteria. A, they don't have the processing, they don't have a keyboard. But to be specific, when you take a look at it, does it say no cellphones? No. But when you take a look at the details about what the device has to have, that would rule out a cellphone device.
But we probably should have.
Well, and it's state statute.
Our board policy, state statute does prohibit the use of two-way communications devices too. And so does our policy unless we tell them it's acceptable. And our policy that says what's acceptable does not support that cellphone being allowed to use in an educational environment. But our policy also says that we can allow it when we want it to.
But I could just see parents saying, well, I just got my fifth grader a cellphone and.
Oh, that's already taken care of. Nope. We would, we would say that is not acceptable. That is very, very clear, but we can clarify that a little bit more. So what you have as part of, you know, the Board package, a couple other local school district policies. Some of them are very loose, some of them are very, very tight. So we'll take a look at that and we'll set a date with the Policy Committee to get together and maybe we can even do that before our next Board meeting to have something presented or at least an update on that. Because this is something that when I close my eyes, we could have this ready for September first, that would be great.
I agree.
So, so we'll have to talk afterwards when we get together.
I'm still sort of in for a board member. I have a prediction that I have them all in school period.
Well, Joseph, let's just put that in play.
Okay. So that's what School Base's policy is basically. You can't have it.
Can't have it.
You cannot have it.
I would agree with that too and what you mentioned to me this morning about if there's an emergency, they can call Barbara and she can get to their children.
It's the way it's been for the last three hundred years. Well, maybe not for all, but.
Didn't have cellphones that many years.
They didn't have one.
They had cell phones that one time.
Okay, I, I, like, my kids didn't have cellphones until they got to high school. Well, we'll take that feedback and move forward. Yep. Hey, I'm just telling you that. Those are things that we'll talk about, certainly will. So we'll bring something, hopefully, before the next Board meeting. So, thank you.
Okay, we're on to looking at revised policy for the district administrator evaluation.
Any questions, I guess, off the surface on the, on the first draft?
Another thing, we were going to visit how often we were going to revisit this as opposed to just doing it once a year.
We had a mandate, we have to.
Not the form, but having some follow-up.
So for instance, we can't add that. It was, it would be not yearly, but you could say, one is, it, right now it states December and January. You could say June, you know, kind of a mid-year, close session with the Board and a goal check and/or progress towards whatever close dictators, so.
We need to make sure it correlates with state statute too.
Well, that's why the, the final, that's why the summative is in December. And I kind of explained that to Katie and Phil a little bit about there is some state statute, statute deadlines that need to be mentioned for a non-renewal of an administrative contract. So, but it, what Katie referring to is like a mid-year check.
Yeah. I, I don't know about that, just when we write the policy, we reflect if and when the state statutes tell us we have.
Correct. So we'll work that into as well.
We also should just practically try to do a better job actually doing it in December.
December is really busy. I, I realize that.
Well, sure, but if we say we're going to do it in December, we should do it in December. Otherwise, we shouldn't say we're going to do it in December.
Well, I, I think that's where it's mandated because of the non-renewal process, but we have a leadway on joint agreement that we can reschedule.
That is part of it too, if it's mutually agreed upon by the Board President again. If it's mutually agreed upon by the Board and the Administrator can be pushed. You can, if we were going to be non-renewing, yes, we're going to get it done in December. Right. You, you can do it at eight. You can, you can give notification, it doesn't need to be in December, it just has to be by a certain date for the following contract.
The concern is that December is always busy, we can do it in November.
We could. Could do November too.
But that may be premature because if you have a, can I tell you, something comes up and we say, oh man, we need to not renew and you've just gotten done doing a review that is pretty good, then we're opening up the door for litigation.
Well, I mean, that seems like a.
I just.
That's why I say you can fire someone for sexual harassment, you know, one day because two months ago you gave them a good review and their performance was good up until then. Well, that's nonsensical.
It probably would be something like that that would be the one that would get rid of you. You just have to be very careful in your timing of everything. Just have to be careful because in our, my insurance company tells me this all the time, we're in a, you know, situation now with employees that even though they may be an applicable employee or contract employee, they think they have certain explicit rights to their job. And so you have to be very careful in timing of things. But hey, we could shoot to get done in December. We'll work around the programs and all the things that go on in the month of December will be done.
I'm questioning. I agree with that. The current proposal would be maintaining the rating system that we're discussing. Might I suggest an even, even scale rating system so that you force a decision off of December?
So a lot, a lot of time. One, two, three, four, bang. So it's not neutral.
So it's not neutral. Yes, we can suggest it.
Good suggestion.
Any other discussion on that? Then we're on to future meetings in the gym.
Sure. Per our last meeting, we didn't bowl and it seems like July fourteenth at seven A M. It was a, was a time when the entire Board couldn't get together. So that would be our next scheduled Board meeting, be July fourteenth. That'll take care of the month of July. And then obviously we've got August twenty-eighth, which is a couple of days before open house and then we're rolling. And then just would like to also highlight in September, we do have our annual meeting and budget hearing set on September twelfth. So that's a, that's a big day for us too as well. And that was set at last year's annual meeting.
I will likely be out for the August twenty meeting.
Okay. Do we want to reschedule that? Whatever. That's just the last Monday. We can, we could go, we could go either the week before, Tuesday. There's nothing pushing us. There wouldn't be anything pushing except we want to have it all settled before, obviously, August thirtieth, because that's our open house date, we'd like to have everything all set to go. So either we go the week before, we go the Tuesday. Randy, are you off that entire week?
At this point, the only thing I can say for sure is that I can act by Wednesday. You know, I would be gone prior week.
We could do it thirtieth, we've got open house meeting. If we went at seven thirty, we'd be able to do Wednesday if we wanted to. Or we just keep it to the twenty-eighth if.
We can leave it here for now, if that's okay.
That's fine, report it the fourteenth. Okay, that's fine.
That's what my first said I was.
But for the other four Board members on the surface, is that book okay? Twenty-eighth? Twenty-eightth, you're good. Thirtieth may be an issue. Okay.
I'd rather not do it the same day as open house.
Agreed. And given that we're meeting July fourteenth, if we, it would still be our month, so if we had to go August fourteenth or even that week, so.
Yeah. If, if we did go earlier in the month of August, that, that's fine. We may have to have a special meeting if we've got some late, late hiring to do in the form of instructional assistance or if we've got a late reservation or if we've got a teacher ad that we have to have. ad that we have to have, that would just be a special meeting, so, we can get our normal business done in the middle of August if that works for everybody too. So we can set that in July. Yep.
Okay. Make a motion to adjourn.
Could have a motion and a second, all in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, means adjourned.